Welcome, everyone. Tonight, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting, Thursday, June 2, 2022, call our meeting to order. We do have quorum. We have three of us. And I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Our next thing would be if there's any additions or changes to the agenda?
Dan, can I propose an addition, Mr. Chairman?
You can bring it up, and we can discuss, you know, see if we want to discuss it tonight.
Sure. I'd like the, I'd like the board to discuss doing a Pride Month declaration. Hebron is an inclusive and welcoming community. The town of Berlin has already done such a proclamation in the past, and other towns have as well. And I'd like to see if we could discuss if we'd like to do one for the month of June.
Okay, the only issue is, I would really think, first off, I think that's something that the entire board should be here for, and it's only the three of us. So that would be the first thing. I mean, I'll see what Peter says. I myself am not willing to, or I don't want to bring it up without the full board being here, myself.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm fully supportive of the concept, so I'm happy to have a discussion about it. So maybe my opinion would be that I would be happy to have an initial discussion to learn more about what this entails in terms of how we proceed with making that declaration. So maybe based on that information, then we could make a decision as to whether or not it has to be tabled for old business and with the full board, but maybe we should get it started. I'm, I'm fine having, adding it and having an initial discussion. If after that discussion you don't feel comfortable, then clearly we can make a determination. But I'm fine adding it and having an initial discussion, because I'm fully supportive of the idea very much. So I, I'm, I'm fine moving forward. So I don't know. Do we need all three of us to agree? I mean, if that's the case, then maybe it's two and one. And, and I'm not sure of the administrative procedure here, but I'm fine adding it and seeing and deciding what to do after we have some initial discussion from Tiffany.
As I say, I, I am not willing to vote on it tonight without the full board being on board. But, you know, if she wanted to at least broach what her thoughts are, we can do that. But as I say, I am not willing to vote on it.
Okay, but I'm, I'm interested in hearing more. So if Tiffany is that, would that be, can we at least have an initial discussion about it? I'm, I'm interested in more, so.
Definitely. I mean, I think it is, I would agree, Mr. Chairman, that I think the whole board should vote on it. But I didn't want the month to go by without at least starting the conversation and seeing what everybody thought. But I do agree that the entire board should vote to support that. But I would be happy to start an initial discussion, and then perhaps we table it for the next meeting. That would be fine with me.
Okay. At least we might hear about how we would want to have more information for the next meeting. Say we talk, have an initial discussion, say, boy, I'd really like to know more about this, this, and this. Maybe Tiffany has a chance to develop more than information for the next board meeting, so we can be more efficient and potentially have a vote on it. So.
Okay, so that would be added to business. So that would become eight E. Okay, so we'll do that. Any other changes or additions? Okay, hearing none. Move into our public comment section. This is the section of our agenda reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments within three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment, and their name will appear in the chat box, and they will be recognized. And I believe that we ask, you know, with your name and address. Do we have anyone for public comment?
There's nobody in the chat at this time.
Yeah, there's none at this time.
Okay, perfect. Then moving on, our good to know, special recognition. This is the point where we would highlight businesses or people who have gone above and beyond. And I believe we have a proclamation recognizing Hebron Fire Department Captain David Schroeder. So this is a gentleman who's, you know, been captain down at Company Two for a number of years. I believe that he and his family are actually moving out of state. Actually been in for over 12 years, according to this. So I'll read the proclamation. Town of Hebron proclamation honoring David Schroeder for his dedication to the Hebron Fire Department, whereas David had been a member of the Hebron Fire Department for over 12 years. And whereas during those 12 years, David earned certificates for firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT, fire officer, and fire instructor. Whereas David earned recognition as firefighter of the year in 2011, and officer of the year for 2016 and 18. And whereas on March 5, 2012, David became the captain of Company Two. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Hebron Board of Selectmen, in recognition of David's many years of achievements, dedication, and leadership to the Hebron Fire Department, and in our community, we hereby designate June 11, 2022, as Captain David Schroeder Day. Express on behalf of the Town of Hebron our sincere admiration for his accomplishments and dedication. I don't know if David is with us or not. If not, I'd like to myself say that, you know, today's world, anybody, anybody who volunteers, whether it's the Fire Department or any of the other needy organizations, you know, should be commended. People in the, in the emergency services field, it's rough. You know, you see things that people shouldn't have to see. You have to go into situations that normal people would shy away from going into. You know, and as I say, here's another gentleman for 12 years. He, you know, literally sacrificed family at times to, you know, for the benefit of the community. So my hat's off to, to, you know, David, Captain Schroeder, and actually to all the different volunteers. It's, it's not an easy job. And sadly, we're finding fewer and fewer people who are willing to step up and do what needs to be done for the betterment of our community. Thank you, Captain. Anything else on that? If not, our next would be, we have a resignation, and we have a letter from Jerry Garfield resigning his position on the Planning and Zoning Commission following the May 24, 2022, PZC meeting. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Gerald Garfield from the Hebron Planning and Zoning Commission with regret, and thanks for his many years of dedicated service. Further, that the selectmen designate Friday, June 10, 2022, as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th and final day by which nominations shall be received is Friday, Ju- July 15, 2022. So hearing the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. So motion carries. Thank you. Next would be our correspondence, and that's Andy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So going into the town manager's report, I was on vacation a week prior, so I'm just back this week on Tuesday. But we continue to work with the new town planner. We have some people coming in possibly looking to do some development in Hebron. It's, it's, I can't talk to the situation yet, but we've met with some property owners, and there looks like they're going to be setting up a preliminary meeting to meet with the department heads over at the building department to see if it's something that is going to be feasible. So cross your fingers. We continue to reach, reach out to certain people and bring them in here, and hopefully we can get something moving. So with a new planner, I'm kind of with him quite a bit. So that takes up a lot of my time, but that's, that's okay. That's very important. As Danny, as you well know, I've been working with the historic properties and general bearing regarding the Witness Stone Project placement at Burnhill Park in the Peters House. So that's, we're going to get placed, I believe, tomorrow. So that's been a lot of people involved with that. The Raymond Brook Bridge dedication is set for Saturday at nine. And then after that, the farmer's market. So we've been putting some things together with the Parks and Recs Commission to make sure that goes off. I believe you're going to be there, Danny, to cut the ribbon?
I have both, both. I'll be doing the inspections at the farmer's market, and I'll be there to cut the ribbon. So I'll be a busy boy that morning.
Okay. So as far as the Horton property goes, the town purchased land, the archaeological study is almost complete. There wasn't any significant findings there. She's going to submit her report to SHPO. We've directed her to do that, so we should be good to go. So we're going to be regrouping on the Public Works Facility and start moving that to Final Design and come back with, to the Board of Suck and the Building Committee with a proposal, once that's done. And we'll be doing public hearings on that as well.
I was going to say, on that, we have had studies done on every question that was raised, if I am correct, and they have all come back with a clean bill of health.
Yeah, so the last three items that we were waiting for, we reflagged the wetlands just to make sure, because it had been quite a while. Still no issues where the footprint of the project is to be, as far as wetlands. Secondly, we had the archaeological, archaeological study. It looks like that's wrapping up and been submitted to SHPO. That was the last one hanging out there. And the other, the other item was, they wanted to see if it was feasible to move the Public Works Facility closer to Kinney Road to try to not use up some of that, that land that, or the footprint that we've picked. And it proved to be a very serious cut, 20 to 30 foot cut, quite costly. And, and then it would be in some of the wetlands, so that wasn't feasible. So those three things were vetted, and I think we can move forward now with, with all the information. Then, as we go through these public hearings, we have the information to answer on those questions.
Thank you.
And then the P and D approved, or adoption, approved adoption of 2022, 2027 Plan of Housing Choices. So that's done, spent, submitted to the state. So we are now legal with that mandate. So that's good news. And that's all I had for that.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's just, it, on that last one, it just, I don't know if I should be surprised or not, the number of people that don't realize that this was a state mandate, that this wasn't something that we decided, oh, let's do this. This was, this is stuff that came down out of, out of the state legislature that we are obligated to do. You know, it is just amazing how people don't understand that we're just a small fish in that big, big sea of bureaucracy. So anyway, thank you. Okay, our first on old business.
Yes, item 8A, I believe, we're on.
Yes, sir.
Storytime to bring that up. There it is. This is also regarding American Rescue Plan, State and Local Recovery Funds approval process, and special town meeting. So the Board of Selectmen looked, or at a special town meeting, has been, has been scheduled for Tuesday, June 28, 2022, to present the proposed projects to be funded through the ARPA for approval by the voters. Attached is a listing of the proposed projects for round one, and those to be considered for round two funding. So there's not, not a lot you have to do, other than we agreed on setting up that, that town meeting for the 28th, special town meeting.
Do we, is this going to be put as a block, or can people vote to have things pulled and voted on separately? How, how does, how's that going to work? Do we need to say that, or?
It could be explained or talked about if people have concerns at the special town meeting. But that's what the public hearing was for, and then we had a follow-up selectance meeting after that. And we really hadn't heard too, too much. So the approval lies in the Board of Selectmen's hands, but because most of the towns wanted to have the taxpayers involved, we're bringing it to the special town meeting. They're going to, the approvals would be approved, the funding and the projects, but those things could change, as you well know, similar to CIP items. Things are going to have to go out the bid. Some of them may require planning and zoning approvals, things of that nature. So that could change some of the projects. But this is the initial first round. And we're at a point where it's been pretty much, these projects have been somewhat approved to move forward, possibly using these funds.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So I guess, Andy, if I can sort of follow up on Dan's point, I think, however we do it, I think we need to set an expectation, and I'm assuming we will, for the meeting, that it is not intended to be getting into, oh, wait a minute, why are you doing the skate park? Or, you know, or pick an item, doesn't matter, whatever the item is. So are we able to do that in terms of setting up, making sure the, the expectation is clear that this isn't another opportunity for, because we already gave that opportunity for folks to interject on individual behalf, on individual items, or bring up new items, or whatever it is, I just want to make sure we set that expectation with the meeting agenda, that this is what we're doing, and this is what we're not doing, just so we don't disappoint people, or get off on a track that is, you know, we're not really intending to go on. So how do we, how do we do that?
I've sent this to the town attorney and told him exactly what we're doing. He's going to give us the protocol. So we'll have the moderator, as, as you've been aware, most special town meetings, the moderator will open the meeting, will pose the question. There'll be some discussion, but that's not really the place to vet an hour-long debate on what should or shouldn't be. We kind of had those openings. But we'll have guidance from the town attorney on how to proceed. Typical example, typical example, like, like the dog park, the committee hasn't come back with a recommendation yet. So that, that's still to be determined.
Yep.
And then, like I said, the Parks and Recs may look at the layout of the pickleball court slash skateboard park and decide, maybe that's not the best place to put the two of them together. That may change. There could be some planning and zoning regulations for some of these projects. Like the bridge, like the bridge, we'd have to, you know, probably do a, a study to make sure we don't affect anything over there before we move forward with that, things of that nature.
So would we, as part of, I know the town attorney has to come back, but would there be, do you think a part of the structure would be sort of using those kind of things as an example, or is that too much in the weeds? Yeah, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm just interested in, because some may, people may show up thinking, you know, have sort of disconnected on the previous stuff and thinking, oh, now I'm interested in voicing my opinion, or I'm interested in what your thought process is. So do we have an opportunity to sort of provide some of that context? I guess is my question. And then when Attorney Slater comes back, I guess I'll, I could ask some follow-up questions. I just think it'd be, it's, it's, it's interesting, like those examples you just gave are good examples at what additional work has to be done. And, and I think people maybe find it interesting, but if it's not the place for it, then that's, that's fine, too. I just, I guess I'll wait, see what Attorney Slater comes back with.
Yeah, like I said, unfortunately, that's the problem when you have the special town meeting. It's pretty much open for the, the actual vote. And then you would refer back that we had a public hearing on such as a today to discuss the projects. It was voted on and approved by the Board of Selectmen to move this forward. So then the meeting or the vote on the 28th, we're going to, we're going to spell out exactly what that, through the town attorney, what that vote means.
Okay, thank you.
Tiffany, did you have any questions or comments?
No, just that I agree. I mean, I think we've given, you know, the public the opportunity to, to comment on these projects. And so it's, it would be my hope that we would not relitigate that at the special town meeting. So, you know, like Peter, well, I'm happy to wait for what the town attorney recommends, and we can go from there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Our next thing would be the 8B, the, yeah, cannabis, cannabis moratorium and potential next steps. Andy?
Yeah, I just had to let the dog out. Okay. Excuse me. The Selectmen have voted to send the question on the regulation of cannabis in the Town of Hebron to the voters for the November 8, 2022 ballot, or referendum. The Selectmen have expressed interest in holding a public informational session prior to the vote. The Selectmen may wish to discuss potential dates, format, and content of the public informational session. The ballot question will need to be submitted to the town clerk by Thursday, September 8, 2022. Therefore, it should be approved by the September 1, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting at the latest.
Okay.
So you don't have to, we don't have to do that tonight. And I'll, if, if the board is so inclined, we'll back the calendar on, we'll give you some suggested dates to do the public hearing.
Yeah. What I would suggest is that the members send into the town a list of those people, like, I think we should hear from AHM. I think we should hear from possibly the state police. I think there's, we should hear from, and I'm not even sure who I would, would, would recommend, but a cannabis group. You know, I wish I could be better, you know, maybe, I don't know, a grower, or, or, you know, someone who is involved in that, maybe, you know, a doctor, a, I'm not even sure what it would be, it would be a natural path. Yeah. I, I want to make sure that we get as, as well a round, a discussion as we can get with people presenting, you know, all the different sides, so that the voters have got the, the best information that they can get to make that decision. So as I say, if, if we can get that kind of sent into the town, then we, you know, they could kind of let everybody know, again, we don't, we want to make sure that we don't do any, anything that's going to be construed as an illegal meeting. So if everything goes to the town, and then they, they pass the information back, I don't know, what do you think on that, Andy?
What I suggested, I don't know if you remember, at a prior meeting, is CCM is doing this for a lot of the towns, because there's certain towns that have done it, certain towns have some regulations. So they could, they could send somebody to talk to that and just give an overview of other municipalities and the pros and cons. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, I, yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay.
What's, what, my fellow members, what do you think? Go ahead.
I'm like, it's only three of us, so I don't want to, um, yeah, I think that that sounds great. I think, though, you know, there, there are certain ideas I have, you know, for example, I think it would be really great to hear from either a police chief or someone from Massachusetts, because they have had, you know, these types of sales for a while. So I think that it would be great if the selectmen could offer suggestions. But I certainly think, you know, CCM is more than capable of putting on a good presentation. I just think, you know, the more ideas, the better. And I think it would be beneficial to hear from people in a state where this has been, you know, the law for a while, and what they've seen. So that would be my only recommendation.
And I think that's good. Yes, I agree. Peter?
I would as well. I think it's, I think this is all about providing, as you said, information. It's not a debate about whether you like it or not like it. It's really about making sure everyone has enough information so they can make an informed decision. And I think that's one of the greatest things that we can do as a board, is to provide people with information so they don't come to conclusions without having all the facts, and they can make a factual decision more than an emotional one. Regardless, we provided enough information for people to make a well-informed decision. And so that's great. And I think the direction from CCM is great. And based on that, if we think we need to solicit some additional information, as Tiffany stated, from other, other municipalities or areas or states that can provide some context. And I, I think that's wonderful. And that's, sounds like the basis for a very productive meeting.
Perfect. Okay, good. Thank you.
I don't have any contacts. Tiffany, do you have any contacts in Massachusetts, or you want to start from scratch? I can, I can reach out. I just don't have any off the top of my head.
I mean, if, if the board's comfortable, I can provide you with, with, with some names, you know, people I, I don't know, but people who have been in the Massachusetts press, for example, talking about it, who are, who sit on those committees, so I could provide a list of names to start. I mean, I don't have any personal connections either, but I just think, you know, it would be helpful to have someone from, I think it would be beneficial to have someone from that state at least try. I mean, we can always try. If they say no, that's fine, or if they don't get back for us, that's fine, too.
Do you think?
Sorry. No, go ahead. I just said a list, a list would help me out. I would have to start from scratch, but if you've got some connections, I could go from there.
Do you think it would be not relevant to have somebody from a different geography? Yeah, I, I just have a, a friend who's on the Board of Selectmen, effectively the city council of a community that instituted cannabis sales early on, a couple of years ago, in the state of Washington. And so it's not local, but clearly there's a lot of context around, you know, it's launched, it's been going on for a couple of years. There's the good, the bad, the ugly. But again, it's, if local is important, that clearly is as unlocal as it can be. It's across the, across the country. But they've been live for a long time now. I mean, they were one of the earlier adopters of it. So I, and I, and I can do that, and he's connected to the chief of police and all that stuff over there. But again, it's not local, so I don't want to suggest that we do it, if no, no one's coming. Okay. So I, I'll reach out and make that connection and see if we can get some information there, too. So I'll do that.
Okay, great.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. I guess 8C?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long budget season. We finally wrapped it up. So we're going to be closing out the year. So item 8C is the fiscal year 2020, 2023 budget status. Attached is the approval for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget summary. The Board of Finance set the mill rate at 31.70 at their May 26, 2022 meeting. Just for a note, that's been the lowest it's been in 10 years. During Board of Finance deliberations, the town government budget was reduced by $76,000. The Selectmen should determine where the $76,000 budget reduction should come from. The town manager has suggested the following as possible areas to be considered for reductions. Is one, take some money out of road repair. And two, take some money out of winter materials, as we know, or maybe some of the new selectmen don't know. It's always a flip of the coin, or a guess on what we're going to need for winter. And it's always been noted that if they need more money for winter, then they would come back for supplemental appropriation. So that's an area we have some wiggle room, and then we'll roll the dice and see how winter really is. And then And then other than that, the Board of Finance and the Finance Director have recommended reductions be considered from uh, road repair materials, 25,000, other winter materials, uh, 26,000 and open space contribution of 25,000. And then there's a proposed motion.
Because we don't have the amounts in there, I, I will hold off on the motion if it's okay with the body. So, so we can work out the, the items. I had thought that when they had first proposed the $76,000 reduction in the general town government budget. I thought that we had discussed keeping open space at its current level and then the rest out of the winter materials. Is, is that a erroneous recollection?
No, we, well, that was when we came back, um, my recommendation to the board was to fund open space at the same amount we did, uh, the previous year. And I think that's what the selectmen kind of agreed upon. But, um, the budget expenses and revenue have to match. So we have to kind of show where we're going to take that $76,000. So it's up to you guys. I just made a couple of recommendations and that, that came from the Board of Finance, actually. That wasn't my recommendation.
My, my big fear is especially on the road repair materials is with the price of oil and asphalt skyrocketing. We, I believe are already going to be quote unquote, behind the eight ball on the, the amounts of, of road repairs. You know, the miles of road repairs that they were planning on doing this year. Um, I, I don't think they're going to be able to, to get the product for the price that they had anticipated getting it for when the budget was formulated. So that's, that's my only fear. I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm nervous about how, how much road work they're not going to be able to do and that, how that's going to adversely affect our, our road maintenance schedules going down the, down the, uh, line.
You know, that's another, again, a true statement. But like I said, we, we put a budget forward, I thought would suffice for what the services we needed and it got cut by the 76,000. So we're going to have to find it somewhere.
So where are you recommending we find?
Me, myself?
Oh, Andy, sorry.
Oh.
Right, Andy, you're saying these aren't your recommendations. These are the recommendation, the money, the, the dollar amount's been established, but the Board of Finance provided recommendations, but they're, they don't align with your recommendations?
They, they kind of do. Normally have to come up to 76,000.
Right, well, that's the problem, right? But where would you, if it were your decision, where would you recommend the 76,000 come from? Even though obviously you don't, you don't want to have this discussion, but we, if we have to find 76,000, where do you recommend we find it?
Well, like I said, looking at the budgets, those are the big ticket items is the road repair monies.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then winters are, it's always been known, uh, as a crap shoot. And if we get a heavy winter, then we always have gone back to the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen saying, you know, we have to, we, we have an obligation to keep the town safe. So that's always been an area we could try to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I misunderstood. I think when you said you was not your, you didn't, wasn't your recommendation, you were saying that you made a budget that you thought was as lean as it could be.
Yeah.
Is that really where you're, I'm sorry. I, I was thinking you had other options to find the 76,000. I'm sorry.
No, that's.
Okay, I got you.
I agree with Danny said, it's going to hurt, but you know, I, I know the school got cut as well and they're going to have to find areas there and, and we're feeling the pain on this one here. I, I came, I thought I came with a pretty lean budget. And as Danny knows me and in the construction business, he's a hundred percent correct. The material, the, the price of asphalt is a hundred dollars a ton. It's never been that. You know, it's been, you know, 60, 70, now it's a hundred bucks. And with the fuel charges that are going on, they're even putting a commodity, uh, for the equipment to make it. Like the loaders and the fuel and the, the plant to, uh, pay for the fuel to make it in the quarry. So it's.
Oh, and don't we have, we don't. We have a new diesel tax coming in Connecticut too, right? So that's, 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 that's going to help. Um, yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's a big deal. Yeah. And those were pre, already approved. So those are, I think there's a double hit on the taxes on diesel coming. So on top of what seems to be outrageous. I, I worry about, it's not another day, another topic, but we all heat this area on legal. And how, how are the people with limited means going to heat their homes? I don't, I don't understand that they're going to pay $6 a gallon for oil. $7 a gallon for oil when they can't, they struggle with $2.50 a gallon? Anyway, okay. So you're saying this, this is the, this is the best that we have in a, in a difficult situation to find the dollars. I'm with you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say due to the gap, gap accounting, government accounting principles, practices. Yeah, your, your revenues and your expenses have to match with, with an approved budget. So we don't have a lot of choice. I, I didn't really want to hit open space, but if we're going to take a hit in the road repair and we're going to take a hit in the winter materials, I think they got to feel a little bit of the, uh, the actual reduction as well.
So as I say, Tiffany, did you want to? Before I open my mouth again?
No, I mean, these decisions aren't easy. Um, but the cost to repair roads, I mean, I know just from my institution, um, the price is going up and doesn't look like it's going down at any point. Um, I don't think anybody wants to cut more to open space, but certainly I would have a concern cutting too much from those other two categories, particularly if we're looking at, um, you know, having then to go back and approve, you know, additional, additional funds. So, um, no, that's all I really have to offer. It's not going to be an easy decision tonight.
So what would it, for flat funding, open space from last year to what was proposed? What was that dollar amount?
So right now, if you don't make a reduction to open space, it, it's, it's aligned with the, the previous year, it's flat funded. So if you reduce it by 25,000, um, I thi, I think it was 150,000. I don't have it in front of me because we're remote. I think they're, I think they wanted, was it 175 they asked? I, I don't have.
They'd ask for 175. Last year was 150, I thought.
Yes, we brought it down to 150.
Keeping it flat funded at the 150, I thought, but.
We did. We did. But of course, we have to, you know, come up with the 76,000.
So if we did the flat funding, that would be 25. And then I don't know if it is responsible, but I, I, I'm, I'm really thinking the, the winter materials. Um, as I say, I, I, I do not want to get behind on the it's, we had gone down that road years ago. And well, you remember Andy, because you had to try to play catch up. You know, and the problem is if you don't catch the roads before they get too bad, then you're into doing base and, and tremendous costs to, to rebuild a road up.
Well, if you're saying you cut it 25,000 from that, you talked about special appropriation. So if you have less in the road budget, is that in general going to mean that you're going to cut, you're going to have to cut back on some of the needed repairs and move on to that trouble that Dan talked about?
Or is.
There's neither way around it.
Well, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm a huge open space fan. However, I'm not looking to have our roads compromised or our safety compromised. And so if I can ask this question, if you, if you took it all out of, again, I'm prefacing this with, I'm a huge open space. If you took it all out of open space and open space came back and said, hey, um, you've got a once in a lifetime opportunity with a grant and this and that to buy a, a, a piece of property that's worth $300,000. It's only going to cost us $80,000. We need to move forward. Would we have that, would the town have the opportunity to do the same thing, to find a special appropriation or some other funding mechanism? And if that's the case, I'd rather find it for open space than, than have to worry that we might be compromising um, the safety and or, um, maintenance of our large, you know, roads are our largest asset, right? I mean, we, we all know that, right? And 80 plus miles of coverage. So I, I, I worry. If there's a special appropriation, I'd rather have it be in a, not in a critical area than potentially in a critical area is, I'm just opening.
Yeah, well, that's why I was suggesting if we, if we flat funded open space, that would be 25 and then take the rest of it out of the, uh, winter materials.
Okay.
I, I get. Danny, I think you're confused. So we left open space at the budget that moved forward at the 150. So it, it is flat funded now, but now that we have to come up with the $76,000, it's a suggestion that we take 25 from there.
Okay.
And that was my point is if we, if we were underfunding open space now based on the original uh, charter or the, I don't know if I'm using the right word, charter, but the original structure of open space was we could fund up to a much larger amount and we haven't been doing that. So do we put open space at a significant disadvantage by taking it all from open space is, is my question.
I, I don't want to do, well.
I'm just asking for conversation sake. Again, I'm a big fan. I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
They had made a couple, um, significant purchases and then we didn't get the percentage match with the state on the Bernstein property that we were used to getting from the state. It was a little bit less. We had to pay more. So they're trying to replenish that account. Your philosophy is if, yes, we could do a special appropriation if they came up uh, with a special parcel they wanted to buy and didn't have enough money, that could, they could come in front of the boards and look for that. But once again, I, I, I think I'd have to agree with, with Dan. I don't think I'd want to take it all from one spot.
Right.
It's the perception to, um, the, the taxpayers too, you know, they voted on a budget, uh, $76,000 less. We got to try to be uh, cognizant of them and be somewhat realistic. So you're a hundred percent correct on the roads. We're going to do less road work. It's a double indemnity because not only are we going to have less money to what we plan to do, as Danny stated, the higher cost of the, uh, the, the product itself. So it's going to be a double hit. Um, so that's a valid point too. It's, it's a, like, like Tiffany said, it's a tough spot to be in at this, this late in the game.
So your, your, your recommendation based on this discussion is still what you have presented there?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, 25, 25 and 26 will, will bring us in line with the expenses and, and, and the revenue. And we'll just do the best we can through the, the course of the year. And if, if we have to come back in any one of those areas where supplemental, we'll come back to, uh, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen and ask for that.
A, as I say, I, I feel our backs are against the wall. I just, you know, there's just, there's just not a lot more shells that we can move around and, and open up. It, we're. You know, this is what a lot of people don't realize is there's just not a lot of, of, uh, our budgets are really lean. We've been very lean for years. So I'll make the motion that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget line reductions as follows. Uh, road repair materials, 25,000. Other winter materials, 25, uh, 26,000. And the open space contribution of 25,000. You know, um, hearing the motion, any further discussion? What would a Witter Road other winter materials budget look like if we took that other 25 from that? Would that devastate that account?
Yeah, I would think so. I think we've got that. We didn't bump that up a lot. And, um, of course, the salt price is going to go up because of the fuel factor getting it delivered. So that tonnage, uh, cost is going to go up. So I, I think if we feel a little bit of pain and, um, and, and the, and the, the optics on this to the public is we're looking, we're really trying to, you know, work this into a, a budget and do the best we can instead of just taking it out of one area and then going, going back to the Board of Finance and asking for supplemental appropriation. I think we're really showing that we're, we're going to try to do the best we can. But the proof is in the, in the winter, how much, uh, snow and ice we get. That'd be a hard hit, 50,000.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I, I made the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Myself reluctantly, aye.
Thank you. It's, it's painful. I agree. Okay. Okay. Yeah, she had that item added.
Just verifying that, that's where we are.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, just starting the conversation tonight, um, this month is Pride Month. Um, the, the White House has already done a proclamation on it. Um, cities and towns across the country have done proclamations. Um, and so I wanted to kind of bring it, um, obviously be ideal to bring it to the larger board, but we can certainly start the conversation tonight. Um, I've looked up a couple of samples while we've been, you know, kind of like to, to kind of share if that would at all be helpful. Um, but I know this board does proclamations for certain things. Um, and I just think that it would be really great to, to show our LGBTQ neighbors that, you know, this town um, welcomes them, supports them, that we are an inclusive community. Um, and I think it can be short. I don't think it needs to be a terribly long proclamation. Um, so just opening the door for discussion about that. Um, and if it's at all helpful to see, um, some samples, I can put a link in the chat. If you two would like to at least look at what I found from last year, something kind of simple from Amherst, Massachusetts. If that's at all helpful, I can do that. Um, so just starting the conversation and then hopefully we can discuss it with the larger group, um, at our next meeting so that we would have time to vote on a proclamation to acknowledge the month while we're still in the month.
I didn't see that.
Okay, one moment. So link should be in there if you want to go ahead and click on it and see what you think.
It came up and then went away.
I got it here.
You, you have it, Andy? Okay.
Yeah.
It's up for me on my computer, but I could try it again.
Dory, can you, can you, you know how to share the screen with Tiffany?
Oh, no, that's it right there.
Okay.
Yep.
There you go.
So this is from, this is one that they had done last year. Um, but I think that there's, there's some good language in here that, you know, we could draft from. Um, it wouldn't even have to be this long if, if the full board didn't want it. Um, but I think, I think any opportunity we have to demonstrate the kind of community we are, I, I think we should take that opportunity when we can. So that's what I wanted to present tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. And obviously there's language within this Amherst one that wouldn't really apply to us in terms of, I see the UN FICO, that's not, obviously that's not something that would even remotely apply to us. But I just thought that there was some, some nice language in here that's kind of evergreen that we could pull from, um, and draft something similar.
I um I like, I appreciate the fact that you raised this as an opportunity. And um I think that the I think you're right about we could keep it very simple as an example. I mean, this is Amherst has a very, you know, very uh more uh specific, you know, a broad based statement and or or a very specific statement in a lot of detail. And I'm wondering if we could even keep it very simple. The beginning is very powerful. It just makes that statement about, you know, that this is the kind of community we are and and supportive of that. And we recognize that and support the the Ju- June as as that month. And um so I think maybe you could, um if you wish, Tiffany, maybe you could use this and come up with an abridged version um for then then we could add that to the next agenda with that specifically to react to. Uh and and as you said, it would be a missed opportunity if if we didn't capture this in the month of June, clearly. Um so I um I understand that the whole board should vote, but I wouldn't want to miss the opportunity. So maybe you could come up with your recommendation prior to the next meeting with this as an example. And in that way, we have something to react to. Obviously, it's it's much easier to react to something than to create something. So uh maybe if you give us something to react to, we could act on it pretty quickly in terms of um the broad board.
I'm happy to take the lead to draft something for consideration in our next meeting, um if the both of you want to empower me to do so. Happy to do that.
Okay, I I I'm fine with that. Obviously, Dan hasn't worked in yet on that, but I that would be nice of you to do.
I don't, I to be honest, I'm accepting of them, I I of of people of of that persuasion. I'm tolerant of them. I work for them. I have relatives. But I I I just see where all of these different groups, it's almost like they just keep hitting that hornet's nest. And um you know, I I just have issues. I support them and I feel that they have all the legal rights of anybody else, but you know, I I just, you know. When do we have straight month? Maybe it's because I'm old. I'm sorry, but, you know, I come from a different generation. And that's just how I am.
Okay, but you uh, okay, but we are you comfortable with uh having the entire board weigh in on on?
Oh, definitely. I definitely feel our board needs to weigh in on it.
Okay, then I I are you comfortable then with Tiffany giving us something then to react?
Yes.
Okay, then we let's, you know, I I maybe we can all agree that we move forward with that. Um and that gives the balance of the board an opportunity to see that in advance. So we can have a good constructive um dialogue on it and um give it the appropriate consideration.
Um Andy, what would be a good date for me to get that draft to you so it's included in the packet? That would be helpful for me to know so I can plan my time for the packet.
Yeah, so the packet, the packet goes out the Friday before the following Thursday meeting. So you've you've got a couple of weeks to shoot something. I if if you're willing, Tiffany, I think you should try to draft something and get it to us so we can look at it and see if we have any red flags. Um I think you're, I think you're pretty good at what you do and I don't think you, as I read through it, I don't think you're looking to have a meeting where we raise the flags at the town hall and stuff because we have other protocols regarding flags of any nature uh other than the American flag and the you know POW flag. So I just, a generic one, send it in what you think you're you think would fly and and I'll have Donna and I take a look at it for legality. Uh so it doesn't conflict with any other policies that are in place like the flag thing that I I read in that. And I I didn't think that you were looking to do that, but um I I think we'll come up with a very, very easy draft that could be brought up at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll try to get on something into you and Donna by Monday. Um and that way we can get this moving and we'll have it ready for the board to discuss at the next meeting.
Okay, and I could I could send it out to the board ahead of time, too.
Our next meeting is the twenty third, which means that the packet goes out the seventeenth. So, yeah, I mean, Monday would be ideal if you could do it because that would give them time to review it.
Yeah, I can make Monday work. That's fine.
Okay, okay.
That's fine.
You know, I'm just, I'm looking at the calendar going backwards, you know, so. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is our new business and we have a presentation now. Andy, do you want to uh recognize Mr. Rose?
Absolutely, with great pleasure. On today's board or tonight's Board of Selectmen's agenda is a presentation by Mr. David Rose on the Hebron Pass project. David Rose will provide an overview of the Hebron Pass project. Information will be shared about the launch of the Hebron Town Trails and Path website. And David has taken uh quite an undertaking upon himself and I've met with him and he showed me what he's done. And Hebron is going to be a much better place for his uh volunteerism and his work. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to you, Dave.
Yeah, thanks very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wasn't able to do a mic check before. Uh as Andy said, my name is David Rose. I'm resident in town, been here for uh over twenty years now, since nineteen ninety nine. I live at two seventy four Wall Street. I sent the board a um printout of a PowerPoint. I I don't propose to go through the PowerPoints slide by slide. That's death by PowerPoint. Nobody likes that. And the whole point of them is that you can look at them and and uh understand what the stories all are. So what I'm going to do is just to to take just a few minutes of your time to give a little background uh as to why this project was created. The practical side of it and then what's going to happen next. So um back two or three years ago in nineteen nineteen, eighteen nineteen, I broke my leg. I had to do a whole bunch of rehab. Um and one of the things that the rehab person said to me was you need to get out and walk on uneven ground to build up your leg muscles, which is fine. One of the reasons we moved from England, you can tell I don't have a local Connecticut accent, was to come to a town particularly in Connecticut for for family reasons, which had good um access to open space. So the airline trail and Gay City were big draws for us to come to this town. Over time, I became aware that the town, in fact, probably of all towns in Connecticut, had got really great assets in open space. Anyways, ironic, the discussion that we had a few minutes ago, uh that was resonating with me. But Hebron is is blessed. It has excellent open space. The the Open Space Committee and uh our predecessors have done a sterling job of um acquiring own space for the public's benefit. Um and you can see on the slide here, um I guess Dory is doing that for us. Thank you very much. What's shown in green um predominantly is public access land. That's the town, land the town owns. Most people don't know where it is. Um this is a slide taken from the GIS. It's publicly available. Nothing is secret, but it's not publicized either. So the Parks and Rec have got some stuff. There is some information available. There is DEP information about certain areas. The airline trail has got some information available. And so it goes. Trying to get an overview is very difficult. That's number one. Number two, when you actually go and look at some of this open space, it's very hard to know where you are when you're driving down the street to actually locate it. Is that someone's private yard that is just overgrown? Is it public own space? What is it? So the project was conceived that um I would map the first of all, the open space that's available and then the paths that are available for people to walk in the open space. So I'm making a distinction between uh trails and paths. So trails uh in in my definition, personal definition, if you like, of what we have at places like Raymond Brook, um the airline trail itself, uh Burnt Hill, uh the Town Center Trail. These are um what used to be called Cinder or now called Crushstone uh trails, um what wide easy access. We have got a lot of what you what I call paths which are just simple footsteps on the ground, making a way for people to walk. And you can get out into um almost what classifies as unspoiled territory. Town's got a lot of this stuff, so the project has been first of all to map it. The next step then i- is to post on the website um where these trails are. And then the third part is to mark the um trails with with markers. Now, um the the discussion um I have with a number of people about this is to whether one follows the preset blazing, which is used on, say, the Appalachian Trail and some of the blue trails in the state uh where you have uh white markers or blue markers on the tree. The problem with that is is they're great. It's fantastic if you know. But if you don't understand what a blaze is and what a trail marker is, then it's much harder for the regular member of public to take advantage of the land that we've got. So the idea here is, uh um Dory, could you go down a slide, please? Is to uh having discovered these, um having discovered the land, having marked the trail, discovered the trails and mapped them, then we mark them with markers like the one on the screen. And hopefully, the plan had been that by now you would have all been given uh out uh little cards like this, which are examples of what the um um trail marker is going to be um with the website listing all of these sites. So the next step that's going to happen is that our, and just to back up, backtrack slightly. There are clearly potential issues with neighbors and with parking and um town departments, uh cost implications, public relations implications. So before I embarked on a project, as Andy said, I spoke with him. Um I spoke and I got agreement from Rich Clark when he was um Parks and Rec and subsequently with Craig Bryant, who is current director there. Um and of course also with Ken Jordan uh on the Parks and Rec Commission to make sure that every day I was happy uh doing this. Now, the first part round, I was trying to engage other people in doing this, but as you well know, getting people to volunteer to do things is quite hard. So I've basically done this work uh by myself. The intention is, as I explained to Andy, that when the project's complete, um I will gift it to the town complete with all the information. I'm not trying to get kudos for myself. This is as a gift to the town uh for the public enjoyment, for public benefit and also to help economic development and all the other good things. So the idea is that this website, which you can um go and have a look at in your own time afterwards, will fall under the um Aegis of Parks and Rec. Uh they'll have access to it and to maintain it. Um just to slide down those slides myself. So the idea is that we're going to have the public launch of the website um on on Hebron Day. So um Craig has agreed that I can have a very small amount of his tabletop underneath his um canopy to promote this, make it um of uh people aware of it. And there will be a bunch of these cards, which there is this card which has got the symbol on it uh and the web address. And the as where of the time. So the cards you might notice, I'll just flash it back up again and hold it steady for a second. You might be able to see that in the body of the arrow, there is what's known as a QR code. So QR code, you see them in advertising and so forth. They allow you to use your um phone to be able to directly go to a website associated with that QR code. So that's that that's a hashy error in the middle there. It looks like lots of dots. The camera, your your smartphone will read that um and take you to the website. The website lists out um all of the trails that you can go to. When you go to the trail, um to to the trail map, you can print a trail map out. You can take along with you. You can, on that trail map, there's another QR code, which is for that specific site and location. So say it's Burnt Hill. So you you print out the map of Burnt Hill, you go to Burnt Hill with your map. You take your smartphone, you look, you snap the QR code and your smartphone will give you a live map. Uh thank you, Dory. It will give you a live map of exactly where you are. If you click on the where it says, show my location, see, I'm trying to point to the screen. So if you click on where it says, show my location, um you will get a GPS fix as to where you are approximately within your ten or twenty feet. All of that is free. So I haven't gone down the uh all trails route or um any proprietary stuff. This is all open source, uh publicly available, uh free forever for everyone. Those maps will then be supplemented over time with additional information. So and I must give a shout out here to Frank Zikus. Uh Zikus, Frank's been extremely helpful um in identifying the assets that are available um and the valuable um opportunities the town has got. Um and I've been happy to incorporate um that information in the trail design and trail workings. The um next step will be, slightly always forest management. There is a pro- there is a, I just want to touch on that because there is a proposal slightly off to one side, that the town engages in uh forestry management. If it were to do so, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a dog in that fight, but if it was to do so, uh one of the things that happens is you get um uh skidways where the uh wood is extracted. It would be possible to convert those to pathways um for people to use at minimal cost. Similarly, the previous slide, Dory, I think it was, where there are adjunct trails that we could readily do. We can make, because these are any footpaths and they're not um major trails, we can link from um say uh the AHM trail um at the St. Peter's property through the fields which are currently unused where the town centered project's going to be to link through to um the Raymond Brook where that purple line is on the right hand image or to link through behind where the water tower is to the town cemetery. So then you can get a a continuous trail or path that goes all the way from Holbrook Pond right the way through to um the new Raymond Brook Preserve Bridge um at no cost, just simply by saying you can do it. Um so if we could go down to page thirty eight, please, next one. Um so where are we? We've managed to identify the the uh properties. The surveying's been done by me. The mapping's been done. The website and mobile app is up. The next step will be to mark the trails, which I've agreed to do with um with Craig to make sure that we choose trails which are appropriate for him to be able to manage and manage to public access to. So um Bernstein Property is is a good, is, I make a pardon, Hibbert Property would be a good example of um a a nice one to to mark up. There are several other ones uh which would would work nicely, whether there's parking available. And then after that, and this is one of the big reasons why I'm talking to you guys today, is to publicize the fact that this information is available. We is all very well having the website um in order to do any, getting anything, any benefit from that. We really want to put some information into Hebrew Views um in the um probably the Fall Edition. Fall's a good time for for hiking these trails uh and also into the River East to um get um people aware that the the website exists. That's a good overview as to where we are. The town um has, I I think Parks Parks Department has got a small amount in their budget for these signs. It's a, it's a tiny amount of money. It's like five hundred bucks, I think, for um the initial kickoff for the um for the signage. Um the labor gets provided for free. The roadside markers, which would be useful, will probably be coming next year. And the roadside markers are, so as you drive around And the roadside markers, so as you drive around town, you get a marker post so you can see that there's a trail there. And these posts would be simple four-by-four posts. Number twenty nine. There we go. The simple eight-foot post with a yellow top and one of these trail marks put on it. And so where's a typical example where you would see that? Well, again, the Bernstein property on Old Colchester Road. You have to always be psychic to know that that new property is available, or the Hibbert property. You just don't know. How do we sign it? Well, we can go down the route of the Raymond Brook where we've got really nice signs. But they cost a lot of money. The signs themselves are expensive. They then have to be installed. That's labor cost. These marker posts here, which you use elsewhere in the world. If we could just go up two other slides, please, Dory, maybe to twenty seven. They're used elsewhere in the world and in the national parks to show inexpensively where trails are. None of this is invented by me, but it is applying best practice from many places to bring to Hebron, hopefully, a really nice asset. I hope I haven't run through it so quickly that it's just confused everyone. If anyone's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I want to thank you. I think it's a fantastic undertaking. And again, I thank you very, very much. I can see where this could also be a boom for the fire department. You know, being, you know, past active member and being involved in multiple searches at different places throughout town for either lost people or injured people. This is such a godsend. Because again, in rescue work, our biggest enemy is time, time and weather. And, you know, anything that can help to cut the time where people could give us some sort of a GPS coordinate or, you know, even if a gay city, I'm on the blue trail, I'm on the yellow trail, whatever. You know, quite literally, we have had people come out stating that, you know, somebody that they were with with a heart attack and not knowing what trail they're on. So this is just incredible, incredible. I can't thank you enough for the the effort and it's fantastic.
The pleasure's mine. One of the big reasons I wanted to have this meeting or the presentation with you is that over the coming months, this will get more publicity. That's then going to feed back to questions to you guys, almost certainly. Because you're the public, you are the public face of elected representatives of all the residents of Hebron. So you're the guys who are going to get questions about it. I can see that if you are a neighbor of a piece of land, which has been effectively dormant for a long time, and suddenly you're going to get people walking on it, there's going to be, and questions get raised. And there is, this thought has to be applied to parking. I hope to work. I had a meeting, initial meeting with Matt Bordeaux about this. And hopefully, we can get some additional information onto the website, which discusses where to park better than it doesn't right now. At the moment, it just says, you know, make sure you're off the road, look out for fast traffic in particular locations. But if we've got instructions to where to park and get that information. And the other last thing was Frank Zikus is going to provide some of the collateral information from the land acquisition that tells you about the land, as to why it's important and why it was purchased. So people know more about what's happening.
Okay, great. Tiffany P.
Hi, David. I just want to say, thank you so much for this. Because I will say, I do hear frequently from constituents that I speak to that they love the open space we have here, but there are, in fact, you know, trails and paths that aren't clearly marked. And so they don't know where to go. And so this is a great example of a volunteer-led project that is going to make such a significant difference in town, where people can go and be confident where they're walking and know, you know, where they are at any given moment. So I just want to echo the chairman's comments and to thank you so much for taking the lead on this. I think it's going to make a real difference in town.
Thank you.
Yeah, same here. It's outstanding work and a legacy work as well. I mean, generational work. And so really fantastic. And as we've seen before in surveys, one of the outside of schools, one of the biggest attractions to our community is what you described and what drove you here, brought you here in the first place, which is the open space as one of those elements in that community. And and we need to do a better job of identifying those properties. And it's awesome at work. So thank you very much. And I think, I guess my question, I had a question, and you've covered it. I just just wanted to make sure. So when you think of some of the areas that aren't used at all now because of lack of parking and a lack of even knowledge that it exists, I live on the border of Mohegan Land. There's Mohegan Land Trust, used to be Mohegan Land Trust property. And it's over 200 acres, I think, if I remember correctly. And now the town owns it or gives it to the town or whatever the case was. I would bet if you took a survey, and I live right on the right on the edge of it, that most of the people in my neighborhood don't even know it exists. And think they would be trespassing because one entrance is down a private road. And you think it's a private road. And so you're thinking, oh, well, I can't go there. Well, that's the land. It's all, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with that. So is every property going to then be identified as part of this? Even if there are some of these challenges associated with access and all that? Or is it going to be, and I think you've said that, but I just wanted to have you repeat that again. Thank you.
So for all sorts of reasons, for practical reasons, for getting people on board reasons for cost. Do the easy stuff first. But the idea is to be comprehensive. So by the end of the project, which will run probably for two or three more years before it all gets done. Then by the end of the project, everywhere will, there is usable access. Some of the public land, because some of the town-owned land is wetlands. It is not accessible. I mean, you can't walk on it. Not with that higher authority than I've got. But everywhere else, and one of the contentious things is where you have got the land where it was acquired as part of a sub-development project. And so it's been set aside, there's like 20% of the land. It will be an accessway between two properties where the property owners have in fact encroached on town-owned land. So you end up then with this little, it's like a thick hedge at the edge of the road. And some of the land may be around where you're speaking, some of the access points there. So you have this very narrow neck that comes out to the road. It goes back one property depth, and then it opens up into into big expanse. Those would be the more challenging ones to do. They will require a bit of work from Craig to cut the brush at the roadside. It's not proposed to do those immediately. It's catch up on those afterwards.
So you stand in for all three years? You can't start it not. We need you for the whole project. That helps. I appreciate it. And again, it's it's hard to articulate the thanks that we should have as a community for the work that you're doing. But the best that we can do, thank you on behalf of the community. It's outstanding work that you're doing. And I continue to look forward to what you're doing next and clearly supporting what you're doing. So thank you again.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Yes, Andy.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, kudos to the volunteerism. But the professionalism and the way he's done the work and the presentation is second to none as well. So thank you again. This is an expensive item that if we would have had to pay, I'm going to have this done. You know, it costs us thousands of dollars and clearly professional in what you do. So thanks again.
Molamak.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next is this is the memo from Matt Bordeaux, the town planner regarding acceptance of a conservation easement for two sixty-nine Millstream Road. I'll read the motion. Move that the Hebron Board has selected except the conservation easement from Elmer Young and Diane Young to the town of Hebron, shown on a map entitled Plan Prepared for Elmer and Diane Young, two sixty-nine Millstream Road, Hebron, Connecticut. Record subdivision map scale one inch equals forty feet. Date of nine twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one. File number two thousand twenty-one dash one oh three, sheet two of five. Bushnell Associates LLC Civil Engineering and Land Surveying, five sixty-three Woodbridge Street, Manchester, Connecticut, zero six zero four two. Phone number eight six oh six four three seven eight seven five revisions, eleven fifteen, two thousand twenty-one, twelve seven, two thousand twenty-one. Which map is on file at the office of the town clerk of the town of Hebron. Excuse me. So hearing the motion, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. And we have another parcel, and this one had a lot more paperwork with it. I tried to read all that legal. Wow. Lots and lots and lots. Anyway, this is the adopt the resolution for the Bernstein Property Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Agreement and Conservation and Public Recreation Easement and Agreement. This is the acquisition of a two hundred and fourteen point two plus or minus acre Bernstein property on Old Colchester Road was approved at a special town meeting on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The town of Hebron has been awarded a grant in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars from the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program. Attached are the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Agreement and Conservation and Public Recreation Easement and the agreement between the town of Hebron and the state of Connecticut. The resolution would be, whereas the town of Hebron has applied for and received a grant for financial assistance under the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program, the OSWA, established and administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP, pursuant to section seven dash one three one D of the Connecticut General Statutes. Resolve that Andrew J. Tierney, as town manager of the town of Hebron, is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the town of Hebron and Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Agreement and a Conservation and Public Recreation Easement and Agreement for property known as the Bernstein Property, OSWA number five nine zero with the DEEP, and to manage said land as open space land pursuant to section seven dash one thirty-one D of the Connecticut General Statutes. So that's the resolution. And as I say, all the agreements, what the state deems as allowed on that property, what would not be allowed, indemnifications, all of that are all in the adjoining pages. So what is your action on this resolution? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next thing. This would be a Water Pollution Control Authority request to discontinue reimbursement to the town. I don't know if Clara and Kevin are with us or not.
No, they're not. I can handle it, though.
Okay. Okay, Andy?
So I'll give a quick overview. The system that we have, the sewer lines go through the town of Colchester and then down through into East Hampton, where the joint facilities takes the waste. And we have an agreement with joint facilities. And we have a percentage, or WPCA has a percentage of responsibility for repairs. Fortunately, Colchester had a major repair, you know, several eight months ago. And they had it fixed. And we got billed the percentage that's in the agreement, which was close to about five hundred thousand dollars. So they expended a lot of their their monies in their account. One of the things that the town does, because the assessors, the office, does the collection of the bills. We had put a stipend or an amount of money in there of twenty thousand dollars. So in attendance to discuss, let's see, the board of segment, they requested discontinue payment to the town of Hebron, the amount of twenty thousand annually, which covers administrative costs, including sewer billing. WP has experienced depletion of their operating fund balance. So they were at the Board of Finances meeting last week and asked for some money out of one of their other accounts. And they're also asking the town to help them out with the twenty thousand dollars. They want to forego that. And by doing both these other things, they're going to try to keep a rate increase down lower than what it would have to be to actually go out their budget next month. So as the town manager, we've talked to the, you know, the finance director and the assessor. If the board of segments willing to to do that, I would suggest or I promote that we do that as well.
Okay.
You know, just for for a broad overview for everybody on here is, we used to have a WPCA administrator that was still part-time, but she put in like twenty-nine hours a week. And we no longer have that. Kevin Kelly wears a lot of hats. And we don't compensate him very much money for for what he does. So we don't have somebody there to do a lot of this this work that Denise Alexander, you said that was the person, when she said that was her position. So Adrian, the tax collector, has been doing it for some time. It's what it is, is really just a revenue source for the town. It really doesn't offset anything in the tax collector's office. So I guess they could use the help. It will benefit the taxpayers of town. So they're they're looking to see if they can stop this annual contribution of the twenty thousand.
Okay. Trying to formulate my words. They are a separate entity. My question is, as I say, I'm trying to formulate the words here. If the town takes this over, it's another expense that's going to be taken on by the town for the sewer district that will then be borne by all the taxpayers of the town instead of solely on the backs of the sewer users. So that's kind of what I'm getting out of this. I'm wondering, is that going to create, you know, although it should be minimal on a per-person tax assessment, if you will, of what each individual taxpayer would pay to absorb this cost. Am I making any kind of sense?
Well, I was waiting for you to finish. The town owns the infrastructure. It's owned by the whole town, not just the users. The town itself is an asset. It's, and we have to maintain that. So what this is, this would be a revenue that we get each year. So what this is, this is would be a revenue, uh, that we get each year. Even though the WPCA is per statute, a separate entity, it's still a town's asset.
Okay, Peter?
Good. So, but, so we're gonna cut the budget for road materials and we're gonna reduce twenty thousand in revenue at the same time. Because that twenty thousand was right to the bottom line, right? So we're cutting, we're losing twenty thousand and we're also cutting other sort of critical functions. And I, I generally want to support what your recommendations are, but I, I, I think that the users of the system should pay for the, the system. Um, and so if you, I don't know what the annual bill is, I forget, but if, you know, i- it's four hundred dollars and it turns into five hundred dollars. I, I, I don't, I don't know the fee. Do you know the fee, the, the sewer usage fee for tho- those on the system? I don't recall. I know I've heard it, but I don't recall. Now, like, well, how much more would it be if the users absorbed this twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, no, not off the top of my head, but I can give you a little bit of back history. So this is a slippery slope. So for many years when we were doing the budgets, there, there was, there was an account there where we kept taking money out of that to offset the, the budget and the mill rate from that fund. So that benefited everybody in the town as well.
I remember all that. I just, I just permanently reducing or eliminating a revenue source permanently because of a, of a certain challenge to me I'm uncomfortable with. Um, you know, I don't mind if it's a temporary, um, situation where you say, listen, this year will be eliminated, but, or next year, next budget cycle eliminated, and then we'll reevaluate. But this permanently take away a revenue source, um, because of a, of a temporary problem. Um, I, I'm not conceptually a fan of, but again, I defer to them. You obviously spent much more time thinking about this than, than I have, but as a concept, I struggle with it. And I do remember, right, there was a, a lot of issues where that those dollars were used, uh, for, you know, offsetting mill rates and things. I can remember that dialogue. So I, I just hesitate to permanently reduce a revenue source. And then we're at the same time, you know, an hour ago, talking about taking funds out of the road repair and, uh, and, and road, and win a material budget. So if we're that thin, twenty thousand is a big deal. Permanently, and I, I don't, I'm not a fan of it permanently. I am a fan of it. Temporarily, I understand to recoup, but I have permanently to reduce it. I don't, I'm not a fan of, but, um, that's just my, my opinion.
Oh, then it's a good one.
Well, Tiffany?
Yes, I, I've been sitting here kind of thinking about it and going back and forth. And, and I think I agree with Peter. I, you know, we, we just voted tonight to cut more from open space. We just voted tonight to cut more from winter materials. Um, revenue is important and for small towns like ours, every cent counts. Um, so I'm, I'm not, and I, I appreciate they've depleted their operating fund balance. Um, but again, as, as Peter pointed out, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money in a town like ours. So, um, I don't, you know, I don't know if it's a possibility to do this temporarily with the understanding that this isn't permanent. I don't know if that's an option or not. Um, but certainly I would agree with Peter that I'm not a fan of, of making this a permanent, um, a permanent item.
Thank you. And that was kind of the point, or I wasn't thinking about temporary. I was just looking at it, it, same, the same thought process. You know, again, we're, we're just absorbing another expense. Um, and I'm kind of concerned with it. Uh, you know, and, you know, we've, we already know that we've had, you know, some people who are very vocal about how involved the tax, the town, the, the, the town itself has gotten involved in, in funding some of these things. And, um, I'm, I'm just concerned. I like the idea, if we could do it, to do it as, as, uh, waiving the, 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 uh, payment for, you know, this coming fiscal year. Um, you know, due to some of their other unanticipated expenses. I just, um, I don't know. I'm, I'm.
But yeah, I think we're all, it's, we all seem, the three of us anyway, seem to be in agreement with that as a concept. Andy, is that something um, that you would consider to do?
You can do that. You can revisit it. You can make your motion.
All right. So, but, so, you know, if you can make a motion for the next fiscal year, and then obviously it could come up, it'll come up again. And then we can revisit it with the broader group and, and look at our finances at the time.
Okay, um. So this would be, uh, for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. So, uh, I guess the motion would be that we would waive the reimbursement to the town in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which covers the administrative costs for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three with, uh, following years to be reviewed and discussed at that time. Does that seem like a fair and accurate?
Can you, can you hear me? Did I, or did I lose my voice?
Nope, you're, you're on now.
Okay. So, yeah, I just want to clarify, it's not a, it's not a reimbursement. It's the annual, um, uh, payment to the town in the amount of twenty thousand. It's not, it's not really a reimbursement.
Okay, because I, I'm reading it off the top where it talks about the reimbursement.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, um.
I, I guess you could consider it that, but we, we, we look at it as it's a, it's a, we, it's a revenue. It comes, it comes into the town as a revenue, twenty thousand dollars. So it's probably an offset, but I guess you could call it a reimbursement technically.
Well, no, we can, we can.
For the motion, I would.
To waive the twenty thousand annual, uh, revenue, which covers the administrative costs, including.
The payment.
Yeah.
Um, just to, just to, just a quick little resolution to discontinue or at least for this year and revisit it next year, the twenty thousand dollar annual payment from the WPCA.
Correct, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through, uh, two thousand twenty-three. So, uh, uh, do we need to have Dory or somebody read that back to us?
Um, don't know if Dory's writing that down. She's running the meeting. I don't think she's taking the minutes.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I could, I could run it through what, what I think it should read and you could agree to it and then vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
So the motion would be to, for this, the fiscal year of two thousand two, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, to discontinue the twenty thousand dollar annual payment to the town from the WPCA and to be revisited in next year's budget.
Okay. Is that acceptable? Okay.
Let's vote.
Okay.
Does that work?
Uh, Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Beautiful. Moving along. Uh,
hang, hang on one minute, Dan. So I'm, I'm having some technical difficulty. I lost my camera, but I guess it's good you guys can still hear me. So.
Yes, sir.
Who, who made the motion and who seconded that?
I made the motion. I, who seconded it? Peter, I see a hand or something moving. I don't know.
Yeah, I'll second. Yeah.
Okay, then all in favor. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next, as I say, would be our, uh, uh, draft agenda for, um, okay, it's saying June sixteenth, but that's not correct. It should be June, maybe it is. It is. I'm sorry, Tiffany. I was wrong.
That's okay.
Our next meeting is June sixteenth, so you need to have it to them basically Monday. That gives them a few days to go back and forth.
Yep, that's still doable. I just want to make sure it's reflected on this agenda, Andy.
Yeah, what? We will add it.
Um, yeah. I have a, there. Okay, so, um, again, so that, that item will be added on. Um, and then from there, our consent agenda, or is there any other new business? Did I go too fast, too far? Okay, hearing none. Uh, the agenda, the consent agenda, I'm asking that we hold off on the approval of the minutes because I know Gail had a number of, uh, clarifications. And because she is not with us, um, I would like to put them off until the June sixteenth, um, meeting. So, so if nobody has an issue, uh, make a motion that we, uh, accept the tax refunds as listed and that we, uh, hold off on the approval of the minutes until the June sixteenth, um, meeting. All in favor of that? Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. And then our next thing would be our liaison reports. Uh, Tiffany?
Um, I, I don't have anything to report this evening. Um, work responsibility, it's got the better of me last month with commencement. I will plan to have a full report on June sixteenth. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Uh, Peter?
Uh, Parks and both, uh, Parks and Rec Commission and the, um, Board of Finance met. Uh, I'll just cover a couple of the topics, the topics, but not in any detail. There, there was a farmer's, uh, market update, so that was on schedule. Uh, like good dialogue around, around Hebron Day. So that seems to be very positive with the date change of that from August to June. And there's a lot of, there's already sixteen, over sixty vendors, uh, in place for that. So that's very positive and something that everyone's looking forward to. Um, Mr. Rose did, uh, an update. Uh, so I was just as impressed the, the second time I've heard it. So, uh, great job again with him. So he covered that. Um, the, uh, there was obviously an update on their camps and, and prep and all that sort of, uh, thing. The, um, uh, the grand opening was discussed. We covered that already with Raymond Brook Preserve, uh, and the, um, they did reschedule their meeting, their, their June meeting to July, so I won't have an update, uh, on their next, uh, two meetings. Now it's been moved to July. Um, so I would say that's still those are the topics. The, um, Board of Finance, uh, the audit was discussed and, uh, and an update was given there. So that seems to be in, in a good position. There was just a couple of interesting items. There was some discussion, quite a bit of discussion around Board of Education's request for two hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, for the, uh, preschool and some clarification that needed to be, uh, secured through the Andy and the Town Attorney relative to the, the way that they need to go about that relative to the next budget, uh, season and the impact there. And then, uh, so more to follow on that, but that was, uh, quite a bit of dialogue around that. Uh, obviously the mill rate was set and then more information on, from the WPCA. Kevin Kelly spent some time providing an update on the, um, pending litigation, uh, and some of the topics we discussed before, uh, regarding, um, the meters that were broken and the money that, that's been owed to us, I think, uh, is that, uh, I don't know if Andy wanted to provide any more context on that, but that was a, a good, interesting dialogue and, and something that clearly needs to continue to be, uh, uh, to watch as it, as it develops. So I don't know if Andy, if there's anything more on that. I don't know if any of these developments in the meeting on that, uh, I didn't recall the dates of the, of the court date or anything like that.
No, I don't have anything on that. I would defer to Kevin Kelly, but I do have an update on the store.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Andy, do you have anything with, um, oh, uh, the, 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 uh, Salmon River, any of that? Or?
Yeah, they're, uh, they're working on their five-year plan. They're getting some information and input from all the participants and, and partners in that, uh, and, uh, that's moving along. That's a pretty aggressive, um, strategic plan they're putting together. So, um, Patrick, I'm sorry, Patrick has left, so now, uh, Matt has some experience in that because Matt was also, uh, uh, one of the representatives when he was in Colchester. So he's familiar with, with that. So I've kind of, uh, between him and Brian, I kind of turned the reins back over to those two gentlemen. Okay.
Um, yeah, they, I have, Fire Department hasn't met yet. Uh, they didn't meet last month and this month they're meeting, I think it's next week. Um, so nothing new on that. Uh, Peter's house and, and historic properties, uh, they're still working on some other property designations. Um, the inside of the, of the first floor code is planning on doing some, um, tours and they're doing that in conjunction with some of the, uh, Historic Properties Commission staff people. Um, actually Pat's going to be working with, with Althea on that. And I guess they're also doing a couple of other events at the Hebron Day. Um, so that information will be out or is out. Um, other than that, um, couldn't it, I, I think that's it. So.
I just had a little bit more on the.
Oh, please.
Two things. One, that the sewer is happy to see Holzner Construction back in town, working on the sewer upgrades that, that we budgeted. Um, there was a delay in products and materials for that as well. So some of the generators are coming in this week and, uh, some of the concrete vaults came in from United Concrete. So they're putting the, uh, the, uh, mechanics inside though. So they're back, uh, on, not on track, but they're back at least working on the upgrades to the pump stations.
Um,
Secondly, uh, we had, uh, the judge ruled in the town's favor regarding, uh, the Church Street property across them, company two, we had, uh, some movement where they started removing the vehicles and hopefully the trailer behind that garage will be gone, um, within the next week or so. And they, the judge ruled in, after two plus years in the town's favor, we've gotten, we're going to get lawyers' fees plus penalties. So, um, took some time. I know people, you know, get impatient, but that's, that's the, the judge judicial system that we're dealing with.
Uh, is there anything new on with, with holes that are, uh, are they hoping to be able to complete on time? I know there's a major problem with trying to get uh, electrical apparatus, electrical equipment.
Well, it's funny you said that, and I didn't put that in my Town Manager's book, but I'm working on that, on that with them too. Um, so I reached out to EverSource. I had a meeting with Holzner and, uh, um, Wright Pierce and contacted our liaison at EverSource and actually put in a claim that the meters that they're requesting are over a year out. I think March two thousand and twenty-three. We're trying to get this job. We have a contract to have it done by this December. And that's what we're still shooting for. So I, I've reached out to the higher-ups at EverSource to get back to me through our liaison and, uh, the budsmen that, that we know. And, uh, so I just did that this afternoon. Uh, I'm waiting to see if they'll substitute those meters with something that's more readily available.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a nightmare. I'm finally getting stuff in that I ordered back in January. You know, this is just regular stuff. It's ridiculous. Um, the delays in, in product, but, okay, perfect. Um, somebody's got to take Gail's place.
Oh, me, me. So, at eight fifty-one, I make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, we have, uh, actually, no, I'm sorry, we have to do public comment first.
Well, you got me all excited. I can do it twice, don't I?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't see anybody on there.
Say that there's six of us and I think I can see also. So, so for the second time at, uh, still at eight fifty-one, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have a safe and happy weekend.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.